Welcome to the Ferndale City Council meeting for Monday, November 14, 2016. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Marnie, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmembers Leaks May, here. Martin.
Here.
Pollocka.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tempiana.
Here.
And Mayor Coulter.
Here, thank you. We have a quorum this evening. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda.
I move that we accept the agenda as presented. Support.
We do have an addition to make.
Yeah.
We need to add a consent agenda item to a previously adopted resolution for an obsolete property rehabilitation certificate application for 1450 Jarvis Street. And CED Director Tordy can give you more information on the necessity of that.
So we will add that as consent agenda item H. And then when we get to consent agenda item, Jordan, I'll ask you to just briefly explain that if you don't mind.
Then I would move that we accept the agenda as amended.
Support.
All right. Are there discussions on the agenda? Marnie, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmembers Martin.
Yes.
Pollocka.
Yes.
Piana.
Yes.
Coulter.
Yes.
And Leaks May.
Yes.
All right, very good. The agenda is adopted. Moving on now to presentations. And we have four presentations this morning. I believe the first two will be handled by our chief of police and our captain, our police captain. Gentlemen, good evening.
Good evening, Your Honor. We have the microphone.
Yes, please use the microphone.
Good evening, everyone. This evening I have the honor of bringing forth a citizens' award. Could I have Mr. Raymond Manning please step forward for us? This is actually two individuals. There is another party, Ms. Cleaver, that couldn't make it this evening, but we would like to honor her as well and we'll make sure that she gets the certificate as well. This is an incident that occurred on September 26 of this year at approximately 4:35 in the evening. One of our officers, Officer Jacklick, radioed that he had a subject flee on foot from a traffic stop on Eight Mile and La Prairie. The subject, who was last seen in the area of 250 Allen, was wanted by the Oakland County Department of Court and the Wayne County Circuit Court for aggravated assault domestic violence. His driver's license was also suspended. The officer was from Oak Park, Madison Heights, Pleasant Ridge, assisted Ferndale officers in setting up the perimeter to look for the subject after he fled on foot. A canine from Southfield PD also responded, and the subject was believed to be between Eight Mile, La Prairie, Fielding, and Allen. The canine was not able to locate the subject, and the initial search was called off at about 5:45. Officer Lemke met a resident, Mr. Manning, while he was searching his yard, Mr. Manning's yard. Mr. Manning was informed of the situation and provided with a description of the suspect. Mr. Manning was asked to call the police if he saw the suspect. At about 6:10 in the evening, Mr. Manning called 911 and reported that the suspect was again in front of his home, talking on his cellphone. While Mr. Manning was on the phone, the subject fled yet again, and officers yet again established a perimeter to search for the subject in the area of Allen and Fielding. While Officer Lemke was on the perimeter, he was approached by another resident, Ms. Sarah Cleaver. Ms. Cleaver was aware of why the officers were in the area and informed Officer Lemke about a suspicious vehicle. Ms. Cleaver explained that she had never seen the car or the driver before. The driver was on a cellphone, and she was slowly driving back and forth while frantically looking about. Ms. Cleaver thought that the driver may be trying to aid the suspect's escape, which turned out to be true. Ms. Cleaver provided a detailed description of the vehicle that was broadcast to all area cars. Sergeant Andre located the vehicle, initiated a traffic stop, and found the suspect lying in the backseat. The suspect and the driver were both arrested without further incident. Without the involvement of Mr. Raymond Manning and Ms. Sarah Cleaver, the subject would have escaped detection and evaded arrest. Mr. Manning stayed vigilant, called 911 upon seeing the subject. Ms. Cleaver took the extra effort to get into her vehicle, locate Officer Lemke, and report the suspicious activity that she had seen. Ms. Cleaver's detailed information enabled officers to locate the vehicle, whose involvement was otherwise not known, and take all of those involved into custody. And we appreciate the help of our citizens in these type of incidents, and we thank Mr. Manning from the bottom of our hearts. Next, Captain Palo Zolo is going to have several of our officers for life-saving awards.
If we can get Officer Shavansky, Cleveland, Scottsky, Gardner, and Bishop up front, please. These scenarios for these heroin overdoses all seem to follow the same pattern. Somebody uses heroin, they start to overdose, and either a family member, or a friend, or somebody driving by sees this person in distress and calls 911. Typically, we are first on the scene. We have trained all of our officers in the Narcan, to administer the Narcan drug. To date, we have had 11 saves since the very beginning of July. This program, put on by Oakland County Mental Health Authority, has made a difference with the citizens and the visitors to the city, and we are here to recognize these seven officers for their participation, embracing this program, and deploying this life-saving drug every single day on the street. So I want to give a big round of applause to these five officers. Three of them are getting two awards today. Officer Matthew Gardner. Officer Jeffrey Pierce is on vacation and couldn't be here. Officer Austin Bishop, your second one, I believe, just started with us in January. Officer Shavansky, first one of the night. Another one in here for you. Second one for Officer Shavansky, second one of the night. Officer John Cleveland. Officer Paul Scottsky is a jump sign. Why don't you guys hang on for a minute? But, Chief, they're all yours.
And also, I would like to have a step forward with this line of our officers. Sergeant Baron Brown. I know that Officer Ken Jacklick, if he's here. Officer Patrick Lemke. And Officer Brian Frazier, who I know is not here, he's on vacation as well. And Officer Austin Bishop. This is an incident, all these officers that I named will be receiving a unit commendation this evening for an incident that occurred on September 21 of this year. At approximately 3:27, Officer Jacklick and Officer Bishop were dispatched to 1040 West Nine Mile, which is 711, to investigate a possible drunk driver in a black SUV. Officer Jacklick was the first to arrive on scene and entered the license plate of the suspect vehicle. The vehicle came back as being stolen from Royal Oak during a home invasion. Officer Jacklick detained the passenger and observed another subject enter the store. As Officer Bishop exited his patrol vehicle, the clerk from 711 reported that the other subject exited through the rear door of the store and fled into the backyards. Officer Bishop put out the description of the subject as he was chasing him. Subject ran from the backyards on Withington Street, south across Nine Mile, and onto Kenton Street. Officer Bishop deployed his taser, and the subject went down. The officer dropped a cellphone in his keys in the stolen vehicle, and then stood up and started to run again. Sergeant Brown, Officer Lemke, and Officer Frazier arrived to assist. The subject exited the backyard on Kenton and started to run towards Sergeant Brown. The subject saw Sergeant Brown and ran back towards the backyard of a residence on Kenton Street, at which time he was tackled. The subject continued to resist as officers were trying to handcuff him, and during the struggle, Officer Bishop struck his head on the corner of the house, causing an injury. We did not make fun of him, I want to make that sure that he knows that. Officer Bishop and Sergeant Brown eventually handcuffed the subject. Upon inspecting the vehicle, the officers noticed a large amount of blood. A bullet hole was found in the car. It was determined that the arrested subject was attempting to rob a suspected drug dealer while in the city of Detroit prior to our incident. He was shot by the subject in the process. Information was gathered from the two arrested subjects, which led to a search warrant in the city of Ferndale. The search warrant led to an arrest of an additional subject for possessing fentanyl and crystal methamphetamine. Without the persistent teamwork shown by these officers, these felons may have escaped custody and continue to commit crimes in southeast Oakland County communities. And for that, we are very thankful of our officers and what they've done. Thank you very much. One more while they're all standing here. This is not a Ferndale award. This is an award from Mothers Against Drunk Driving. Officer John Cleveland, who's standing right here, his family's in the audience. John has been the recipient of the Mad Drunk Driving Award for the city of Ferndale nine years running, although there was a short period of time where he did not make that award for good reason. But for every year, including this year, he has arrested the most drunk drivers on the department. This year, this is 2015, he arrested 35 drunk drivers. We were requested by MAD to present this award to him, as well as his 35 pin and a MAD pin that he can wear on his uniform. Unfortunately, the MAD pin says 25. They sent us the wrong one, so we'll be rectifying that shortly. But we are congratulating John for the good work that he's done on The Midnight Show. That's all we have this evening. Thank you, Your Honor.
Great, appreciated, Chief, and Captain, and all of the fine men and women of our police department. Appreciate all the great work you do. Let's give them one more round of applause, everyone. All right. Well, Councilwoman Leaks May, you're gonna have a hard time following that, but you are, I understand you are going to introduce our elementary Lego League group, is that right?
Yes, yes. So I want to welcome the Elementary Lego League, also known as the Ferndale Blackheads.
Come on up. Ferndale Blackheads.
And where's the microphone if they needed it?
Uh-oh.
Where'd it go?
Is the mic, yeah, it's over there.
Okay.
Who's gonna speak? Who's gonna explain? Are you, or...
They're all.
Huh?
They're all gonna speak.
Wow, okay.
Hold it in the middle?
Why are you gonna look at us?
Are you gonna look, they could, actually, the camera's...
So you know what we're gonna do, is we're gonna have you look the other way. I know it seems weird, because you want to look at us, but if you look that way, everyone in the audience will see you, plus the cameras will, at home, will see you as well, okay?
Nice try.
There you go.
Well done, Mayor, have a scrambling.
Check it out. Hang on, go right ahead.
Hello, we are the Ferndale Blackheads from Ferndale Upper Elementary School. My name is Tris.
My name's Ellen.
My name is Madison.
My name is Evelyn.
My name is Noah.
My name is Wade.
My name is Liam.
My name is Aiden.
My name is Kieran.
We are here to speak about, I mean, we are here to speak to you about the concerns for the local bat.
Our team has been talking about bats, and our school recently had an assembly about bats. We learned about bat problems and adaptations. Our team also went to the Cranbrook Bat Zone. We asked questions about why bats are disappearing. We learned about how we can help bats in our community.
The problem is that people are tearing dead trees down, and bats roost in the dead bark. Bats are losing their homes and leaving the area and not eating our bugs.
Bats are helpful to humans because bats eat mosquitoes and other bugs. Fruit bats actually pollinate and help fruit ripen. Bats help farmers and gardeners when their guano turns into fertilizer.
Our team would like to encourage Ferndale residents to help promote the bat population in Ferndale.
We suggest that when a tree is cut down, a bat house goes up.
Plant native gardens to attract bugs that bats like to eat.
Use environmentally friendly pesticides.
Keep a water source like a bird bath in backyards.
We are requesting that the city council pass a resolution which proclaims that the city of Ferndale is a bat-friendly city. We request that the city encourages its residents to promote the bat population by making bat houses and wildflower seeds variable to its residents to remove or cut down trees.
When a tree falls down, a bat house can go up.
Thank you. Do you have any questions?
Well, first of all, well done. They asked us if we had any questions.
Well, I do have a question. Aren't you, are you guys going to be performing this anywhere else coming up soon? This presentation?
Yes.
Well, a bit of it, because we have like a championship coming up, a tournament, and we're gonna have to present a bit of this.
And where will the tournament be?
I have no idea. It's a random place in Ferndale.
Okay.
Troy High School.
I have a question. Where do you get a bat house at?
Well, you can go on batconservation.org and order it. Or you could go to Cranbrook and see if they have it there. Or people can start making markets in Ferndale, playing bat houses and helping bats in our communities, so local bats are...
I have a question.
Yeah?
If I did buy one, where would I put it? If I didn't have a tree in my yard, where would I put it?
You would put it on 15 to 23, 25, 25, 24, in somewhere facing southeast.
Okay. Could it go on someone, like, the back of someone's garage that faced the south?
Also, well, you could plant native plants to attract bugs, that attract bats, so that the bats eat the bugs.
I like that. That's good. What other questions do you have?
This is great.
What grade are you?
Thank you.
Fourth grade and fifth grade. Well, I want to congratulate you. You guys did an outstanding job, and we learned a lot. And I heard you say something about a proclamation to pass, and if you have an example of that, we would be happy to, you could give that to our clerk. If you don't have it now, we'll get it, yeah, there it would go, just so that we have that, because we'll be happy to take that up and consider it. And thank you very much for coming with us today. Thank you, everybody. Let's give them a round of applause. Very nice job.
Can we see that poster board? Just open it up until we can just see what it is.
Oh, yeah, we didn't get to see that.
We didn't see that, but...
Oh, okay.
Hold it up there. Ah.
Oh, nice.
Okay. Very nice. Thank you.
Thank you.
Nothing about Lego or robots at all.
Yeah.
I loved it. That was wonderful. Good job. So now, the real hard act for Commissioner Zach is to try to follow that.
This is a tough night, so... Elaine Zach, Oakland County Commissioner. First of all, I want to thank people for re-electing me, and I look forward to serving the city of Ferndale and being the voice of the county for you. And this evening, I want to tell you about some things going on in the county. And I know that our downtown DDA, we have the Small Business Saturday going on here. Well, the county has taken this further, and there is a contest for Oakland County residents. And I just want to make sure, do we have it on our website, that Small Business Saturday? You can enter by shopping in local stores. Not only can you be eligible for an American Express Business Card through seed lending, but the county has some sponsors that are offering prizes. First prize, $5,000. Second, $2,000. Third is $500 voucher for travel on Southwest Airlines. And there are directions, if you want to go to advantageoakland.com/shopsmall. Or for people that don't use the computer, you can get instructions by calling 248-858-1922. That's Christopher Dinan. And there's all sorts of instructions, but I think it's really exciting. If you're shopping, why not apply to get some prizes? I'm very pleased to announce that we finally passed an Oakland County PACE program, which means Property Assess Clean Energy Program. It only took about four years for us to get it done, but it's happening, and, you know, it does include all, not only Ferndale, but the whole county. And one of the things that I heard from some other cities is that they might, like, Southfield has had theirs for a while, but then they have people, and I know you have too, but you might have companies that have multiple locations. And so it just streamlines the whole process throughout the county. And it's long overdue, I know Ferndale has it, but countywide. We also passed recently an open data policy that I do want to tell people about, and so you can get more information online at no cost. So, which I think is a good thing, and making it easier to do searches. That's it for this evening, and any questions for me?
Just congratulations. We're pleased you're back with us.
Thank you.
We're happy to have you for another two years.
I'm happy to be here. Thanks.
All right. Good to see you. All right, that concludes our presentations this evening. The next item of business would be called to audience. This is your opportunity, for those who are here in the audience, to address counsel on any issue that you like that's not on the agenda, because I would ask you to speak to that when we get to that portion of the agenda. So come on up, give us your name and address, and three minutes is yours to talk about whatever you like. Yes, sir. Good evening.
Tim McGee, 1950 Highland, 39 years. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Honorable Council Members. On Friday, October 12, while I was home, I suddenly experienced a serious medical condition with my heart. I dialed 911, and the Ferndale Police Officers, Sergeant Lemke, and the Ferndale Fire Department. Their advanced life support team examined me and quickly diagnosed my condition, started an IV, and administered a drug called Adenosine that restored my heart's normal rhythm almost immediately. An average heart rate is 60 to 80 beats a minute. Mine was 180. My heart would have failed if allowed to run like that. They transported me to Beaumont Hospital, where I spent the next three days in the cardiac intensive care unit. I want to publicly extend my deepest appreciation to Ferndale firefighters Kevin Northup, Miles Bracalli, who were on the ambulance, and Sergeant Bob Farrar, and firefighter John Schwal, who were on the fire engine. Together, they worked quickly and effectively to save my life. I will always be grateful to them and to Chief Kevin Sullivan for protecting our community with such an excellent and highly professional department. God bless the Ferndale Fire and Police Departments, they are truly Ferndale's finest. Thank you.
Mr. McGee, we're very grateful that you're all right, and thank you for coming and sharing that story.
Thank you.
Great to see you. Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening, City Council. Erica Cravens, 314 Jewell Street. I also have a property at 1741 Browning Street. Recently, I was ticketed for a barking dog. This was the third notice for me, so upon the second notice back in March, I had a privacy fence built. I went to court last week just to kind of get clarification on what excessive kind of would deem, because I did reach out to neighbors. Several of them reached out to me, but I don't think the person calling the police did. I was told that excessive is when the police are called. So I'm just trying to kind of get a definition, because I fear that this is going to happen again, and I did have to pay $100 last Wednesday. The tickets will continue to go up if they're called out again. It's my understanding that these calls are anonymous, so I can't reach out to the neighbor and just kind of squash this amicably. And then I have no recourse, because if the police are called, at some point, I'm fined because they're sent out consistently. As I said, there's multiple dogs. I mean, Ferndale is a city of dogs. So I just kind of want to know, what can I do going forward? Because as I said, I fear this is the case. My dogs are not out frequently. One of my dogs actually sounds like a neighbor's dog. She's been yelled at a couple times thinking it was her, and it was my neighbor's dog that was actually barking. There's been no proof, i.e. video, or anything to show that it's been my dog in the previous account. So I guess, what kind of recourse do I have? Because next time they come out, the ticket's $200.
So I might just ask the chief, and I don't know if you're familiar with this particular case or not, but if maybe you could, because we can look into this if you're not, but if you could just tell us in general what is allowable and not in terms of the nuisance with barking and dogs?
That's all we're trying to get clarification of.
The nuisance, Your Honor, is generally driven by the neighbors. Your dog can bark as much as your dog wants to bark, as long as your neighbors don't complain. If they do, and the officer, it's not a level of noise, typically there is a warning, typically is...
Isn't there a length of time? Maybe I missed remembering.
That's what I asked. It's just...
There's not a length of time.
No, but typically, if your dog barks one time, and the officer gets there, that is not going to be a violation. If it's going to be a continual bark that the officers have responded to, it becomes a judgment call in certain cases, so it's, you know, but usually they warn you at least.
Well, and that's the thing, when I first, because I just moved to the 314 address back last year, October. So when I got the two, because I did get two notices, so I'm not going to deny that. My last one was March 23, and in April, we had a full privacy fence put up for that very reason, just making it would curtail. So we hadn't gotten a call again until October. And like I said, I can respect everybody's privacy. This wasn't during the noise ordinance. The first two times was on a Saturday afternoon, and this time was on a Tuesday evening at about 9:45 PM. So I'm not going to dispute that my dog does not bark, but when I asked what excessive was at court, I just, I got a definition of when the police are called, and I didn't, I mean, that sounds very fluid. And when you have a law that has stipulations that fluid, if I'm irritated for the day and your dog barks once, then I can call the police. And then it gets to be childish, is what the judge said, and you hope that your neighbors can be amicable, but I'm at the point where one can't be, and so next time, it's 200 bucks for me.
Well, the recourse is, is that you can, you can ask for the officer to show up in court. If one of our officers issued a citation for barking dog, you can listen to his side of the story as well, if you want to go that far. It's not a cost factor, it's the same price if you want to listen to why the officer issued the citation. I can't speak to why it was or what the circumstances were, but typically, I have to tell you, barking dogs are, there's not a lot of those tickets that are written.
I know.
We try to talk to the neighbors, try to talk to the, but she is right, is that we don't, on a barking dog, we're not going to ask for who the complaint is. It's not, the officer will only issue the citation if the officer hears the dog barking, he or she themselves.
Through the chair, if I may, you know, I don't know the last time that any council has taken a look at the noise, dog barking ordinance, but I think this would be an appropriate time to review it, and maybe it needs more teeth.
Got that one.
And providing, you know, some clarity and guidance, so that our police officers have more objective criteria, but also provide clarity for residents.
And like I said, we're just, we are a dog-friendly city, I will acknowledge that, but I've got dogs to my right, to my left, and every house behind me has dogs. So at what point do you know that they're kind of barking at each other, they're being dogs, you know? And like I said, I didn't have a definition of excessive. And like I said, I didn't have a definition of excessive, so I didn't know where to go with it.
Yeah. We have lots of resources in this city that can provide support and guidance and insight from all of our dog businesses, so.
April, can you do a couple of things? Get us, get council a copy, and make council a copy of the current ordinance, because I clearly misremembered it, and then let's talk about if there's some ways that we can clarify it.
Yeah, just anything. Thank you so much.
Appreciate it. Anyone else would like to address counsel this evening? All right. Seeing none, we will move on to the consent agenda. Consent agenda are those items that council considers routine, and we enact in one motion, unless something is removed by council from the consent agenda. And maybe, Jordan, before I read it, why don't you use this opportunity to just briefly explain to us what item H will be? And I believe everyone on council has received a copy of consent agenda H. Yes?
That's correct. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council. So this item is, if it looks familiar, that's because it is. It's the Oprah Certificate exemption for 1450 Jarvis. We approved it at the last council meeting, or you approved it, more accurately. When submitted, the next step is, if you may recall, if your memory is that good, that the next step was that this packet gets submitted to the state Treasury Commission. And essentially, in that review, they identified a couple lines that needed to be added to the resolution. So while I bring it back before you today, the good news is, we're going to have a great template for the next Oprah, if we ever decide to do one. So essentially, you'll look, a lot of the memo that I put before you is very familiar to the one that you approved before, but that first paragraph kind of outlines those two items. Essentially, an explicit assertion that the property owner is not tax delinquent, and the, also enumerating the specific term of the exemption, as is standard with an Oprah tax abatement. It's a 12-year period, so that's now in the language of the resolution that's before you. So we inserted those, and with the approval of this item today, it should be good to go for the state.
Good. Thank you. Thank you, Jordan. So now, let me read the consent agenda. Item A would be the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting held October 24, 2016. Item B would be the approval of the provision of free parking in all downtown municipal metered parking spaces during Small Business Saturday on November 26, 2016. Item C is the approval to accept the low price for a Noble ware washing UH30E high-temperature undercounter dishwasher at $3,199 from the restaurant store, to be paid from the fire department's facility account. Item D is the approval for the listed accounts to be charged as a lien against their respective properties, and to be collected as special assessments with the December 1st, December 1st, 2016 tax roll. Item E is the approval of the Allied proposal of $29,988 to make upgrades to the cable TV/IT room, and that the DPW director be authorized to sign the proposal, expense charged to the general fund, capital account. Item F is the approval of the Allied proposal of $35,823 to make upgrades to council chambers, and that the DPW director be authorized to sign the proposal, expense is charged to the general fund capital account. Item G is the approval of the bill and, bills and payroll as submitted by the city manager's office, subject to review by the council finance committee. And finally, item H is the Oprah exemption for 1450 Jarvis. What is council's pleasure on the consent agenda this evening?
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Support.
Moved by Piana and supported by Martin. Now, is there any discussion on the consent agenda?
I believe City, or Cindy Wilcock has something to announce for Small Business Saturday.
Please do. In addition to free parking?
So, I'm sorry, I have to ask, free parking, so there will be signs?
Correct.
Thank you.
Hi, Cindy.
Good evening. How are you?
Wonderful.
Good. As Commissioner Zach kind of spoke about, Saturday, November 26th, which is the Saturday after Thanksgiving, is Small Business Saturday. It celebrates supporting your local downtown businesses, small businesses. It's kind of an answer to Black Friday. It was originally begun by American Express. In addition to what the county is doing, the downtown Ferndale merchants and the DDA is working with the Chamber this year, so we've been able to extend our reach to businesses outside the DDA district, particularly some on Hilton and Livernoy. So we're excited about that. We're excited to be working with the Chamber and including these other really cool businesses. We've got over 30 businesses that have signed up so far, and we are starting things out on that morning with kind of a welcome sent station at the Rust Belt Market. You can check in between 11 and 2 that day. You'll get these cool little Shop Small bags. You'll get a list of the businesses that are participating, and we are also doing a Small Business scavenger hunt. So you'll get a map that's got 12 clues on it. The clues will drive you to local businesses. They'll sign off on it if you perform the task, or you find the product that you're looking for, or whatever their clues are. And then you're entered into a drawing to win prizes from those businesses. And that'll actually extend all the way through Mary Moonlight Madness, which is the third Thursday in December, December 15th. Because although Small Business Saturday is November 26th, we really want to make it Small Business Saturdays, and Shop Small, and encourage people to shop local all through the holidays. So with that, I brought you guys all your own Shop Small.
All right. Thank you.
So that you can plan on spilling them on locally.
Yes. Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very cool.
Thank you, Cindy.
Thank you.
Put that right there. Shop Small.
Thank you.
Excellent. All right. Other discussions, comments, questions on the consent agenda, either by council or by anyone in the audience? If not, Marnie, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmembers Pollocka?
Yes.
Piana?
Yes.
Leaks May?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
And Mayor Colter?
Yes, thank you. The consent agenda is adopted. Moving on now to our regular agenda. Item A is the consideration of appointments of Whitney Lemelin and Emily Obert to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee, for terms ending December 31st, 2019. And Councilman Pollocka is our liaison to the Parks and Rec Advisory Committee. Do you want to introduce that item?
I do. Very excited. We have two new citizens, residents, that want to be a part of the Parks and Recreation Commission. And Whitney has been a resident of Ferndale with his family for about 15 years, and has school-aged children, so that's a nice add to our commission, to have that viewpoint of someone who has kids that utilize the parks. And Emily Obert is a new resident, has lived here about a year, and she and her fiance live on the east side of Ferndale, near Martin Road Park. She, incidentally, has a physical limitation, a disability, requires the use of a wheelchair. So I'm really excited in getting her input and her opinions about how people with disabilities have use of the parks, how they utilize the parks and recreation programs. So both excellent candidates, and very excited about both of them joining our team.
Sounds like you found two very good people. Are either one of them here?
No, unfortunately, neither could make it tonight, but both of them said that they will come to a future meeting to introduce themselves. But I wanted to make sure that we got them added, so that we could get them to the next commission meeting.
Excellent. So would you like to start with the motion?
I would, and now I have to find it. I moved that we confirm the appointments of Whitney Lemelin and Emily Obert to the Parks and Recreation Commission, for a term ending December 31st, 2019. Support.
Moved by Pollocka and supported by Martin. Any discussion on those appointments?
Welcome to the Parks and Rec.
How about great additions? Thank you, Councilman Pollocka. Marnie, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmembers Piana?
Yes.
Leaks May?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Pollocka?
Yes.
And Mayor Colter?
Yes, thank you. Those appointments are adopted. Moving on now to regular agenda. Item B is the consideration to set a public hearing to vacate a portion of the East Breckenridge right-of-way. And Justin is going to handle that one.
Good evening.
Good evening, Justin.
So once again, we have a, a meeting to set a meeting, essentially, coming forward. Anytime there's a-
We're getting good at that.
Yes, a right-of-way vacation, anytime that happens by ordinance, we're required to set it forth for consideration by council, and then if council wishes to move forward, then we set a public hearing at a later date. So recently, the Madisonites Glass Company over near Camborn and, East Camborn and the railroad tracks, they've been expanding their campus, and they had requested to vacate a portion of East Breckenridge. So that portion is just basically abutting the railroad tracks. Essentially, over the years, as Madisonites Glass has been there, they've seen sort of a dangerous situation where their parking lot that is just adjacent to the railroad tracks, many people, maybe it was an alley at one point in the past, unsure, but many people feel that that is a road, so people have been cutting through there, which makes it quite a dangerous situation for employees and customers and things like that. So, so their request was to vacate that portion of East Breckenridge, and that would really contain all of their operations into one cohesive campus. We put forth this request in front of the fire department, police department, and all the other departments in the city. The main primary request was just to ensure that utilities would still have access through an easement, and that emergency services would have access, most likely through an OX box or something like that, to be able to access that. So everyone, all the departments approved and said to move forward, so we're here to recommend the resolution that's been part of your packet, and if you approve, then we would set a public hearing date for December 19th. And as part of the ordinance, we're required to notice that in the local paper two successful weeks in a row prior to that meeting, so.
Is that, would that meeting happen at council, or is that off premises?
It would, it would happen at council on December 19th.
Is there a motion?
I'll move that the city council approve the request to set a public hearing for the consideration of the vacation of the portion of East Breckenridge right-of-way between the railroad and Hilton Road.
Support.
Moved by Martin and supported by Pollocka. Now, questions, yep, comments?
So I know more will be discussed at the next meeting, but is the intention to make it a permanent blockage, or are they going to put up a gate that can be opened, so if necessary, traffic can flow through?
Correct. There would be a gate, and actually, as part of the planning commission's review of the site plan recently, that was, that was included in the site plan, contingent upon this sort of approval.
Any other questions or comments? Pretty straightforward. I mean, it's a dead end, it's a dead-end street, so.
Right.
Clearly, folks are doing what they're not supposed to there, so. Okay. Without any other questions, Marnie, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmembers Leaks May?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Pollocka?
Yes.
Piana?
Yes.
And Mayor Colter? Yes, thank you. Those appointments are adopted. Moving on now to regular agenda. Item B is the consideration to set a public hearing to vacate a portion of the East Breckenridge right-of-way. And Justin is going to handle that one.
Good evening.
Good evening, Justin.
So once again, we have a, a meeting to set a meeting, essentially, coming forward. Anytime there's a-
We're getting good at that.
Yes, a right-of-way vacation, anytime that happens by ordinance, we're required to set it forth for consideration by council, and then if council wishes to move forward, then we set a public hearing at a later date. So recently, the Madisonites Glass Company over near Camborn and, East Camborn and the railroad tracks, they've been expanding their campus, and they had requested to vacate a portion of East Breckenridge. So that portion is just basically abutting the railroad tracks. Essentially, over the years, as Madisonites Glass has been there, they've seen sort of a dangerous situation where their parking lot that is just adjacent to the railroad tracks, many people, maybe it was an alley at one point in the past, unsure, but many people feel that that is a road, so people have been cutting through there, which makes it quite a dangerous situation for employees and customers and things like that. So, so their request was to vacate that portion of East Breckenridge, and that would really contain all of their operations into one cohesive campus. We put forth this request in front of the fire department, police department, and all the other departments in the city. The main primary request was just to ensure that utilities would still have access through an easement, and that emergency services would have access, most likely through an OX box or something like that, to be able to access that. So everyone, all the departments approved and said to move forward, so we're here to recommend the resolution that's been part of your packet, and if you approve, then we would set a public hearing date for December 19th. And as part of the ordinance, we're required to notice that in the local paper two successful weeks in a row prior to that meeting, so.
Is that, would that meeting happen at council, or is that off premises?
It would, it would happen at council on December 19th.
Is there a motion?
I'll move that the city council approve the request to set a public hearing for the consideration of the vacation of the portion of East Breckenridge right-of-way between the railroad and Hilton Road.
Support.
Moved by Martin and supported by Pollocka. Now, questions, yep, comments?
So I know more will be discussed at the next meeting, but is the intention to make it a permanent blockage, or are they going to put up a gate that can be opened, so if necessary, traffic can flow through?
Correct. There would be a gate, and actually, as part of the planning commission's review of the site plan recently, that was, that was included in the site plan, contingent upon this sort of approval.
Any other questions or comments? Pretty straightforward. I mean, it's a dead end, it's a dead-end street, so.
Right.
Clearly, folks are doing what they're not supposed to there, so. Okay. Without any other questions, Marnie, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmembers Leaks May?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Pollocka?
Yes.
Piana?
Yes.
And Mayor Colter?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Justin. All right. Item C is the consideration of a demolition contract for 465 Hazelhurst. Who is introducing that item?
Just for clarity's sake, it's East Hazelhurst.
Yeah, it sure is, too, isn't it? 465 East Hazelhurst.
Thank you.
In case someone lives at 465.
Just saying. Really uncomfortable woman somewhere right now.
All right, Jordan.
Hey, again, long time no see. So this item is actually, and I have to credit our building official, Mark Howell, for sticking with this one for a very long time. It is a saga that has began in 2009, as you can see in your memo. It's a situation where you had a home that was abandoned, and it was also sort of a hoarding situation as well. So there were several attempts at outreach through our department. You can see some of the major highlights in the memo that I prepared from you, but just for the folks at home, just to kind of get a sense of the scale here, from 2010 to 2016, there were 22 code enforcement actions on this property alone. Several issues, fires, flooding, a lot of different situations that necessitated escalating action. And so there's been a whole process to this. Due process has been provided to the, to the owner of the property. It's been through court, and you can see, actually, that was provided to today, City Attorney Chris provided you with an update. Actually, I apologize. So we actually got an email today from the city attorney noting that there were some emergency actions that were filed. Sort of, as the way I understand those, and Dan can give a little more detail, they're sort of a last attempt, sort of one more chance to appeal the process, which has deemed us having the authority to demolish this property and put the cost on the tax rolls. Essentially, what that would mean is, so those two motions were a motion for stay of execution of judgment, and an emergency motion for stay of execution of judgment. So essentially, those two mechanisms sort of being, again, that last-ditch effort to stop this process from moving forward. And so what I would ask is, the motion that's in front of you, while that is getting ironed out, that we would modify the motion in front of you to make it say these sort of, these explicit words as part of the motion, making it contingent on any stay of the court's judgment being dissolved, and the defendant's motion for the stay of execution of judgment being denied. So essentially, what that does is, it allows you to take action based on what our staff has done, with the process has gone forward, all contingent upon this, this sort of last-minute issue being ironed out in the courts. And Dan, again, if I missed anything or misspoke, please.
No, I think that covers it. Again, through the chair, this was, this particular property, as council knows, there was a public nuisance abatement action that was filed, and a judgment was issued by the court, which provided that the defendant address and cure the nuisance, and failing to do so, that the city would be allowed to abate the nuisance. And it's that second step, which is currently the basis for this underlying matter, which on any stay of the court's judgment being dissolved and the defendant's motion for the stay of execution of judgment being denied.
Support.
So moved by Martin, supported by Pollocka. Now, questions, comments?
I have a comment, but it's sort of a segue into a broader conversation that I think council needs to have with city staff. I had brought it up earlier this year with April, our city manager, about taking a look at our housing policy, particularly along vacant properties from the master land use plan. There's 11% vacant properties here and I know we have persistent problems and with addressing some of our vacant and blighted housing. And so taking a look at our housing ordinance to make sure it has the right, again, teeth in it to give the, give the proper actions to our staff to address this in a little bit more deliberate way than what we have in the past. So I think this is the beginning house out of many.
I have a question, and I am no expert on what it costs to demolish a house. I, like most people, just happen to read about it mostly in the city of Detroit in the paper, but it has always struck me that the cost of a demolition, the average cost of a demolition, at least in the program that's running in Detroit, is usually somewhere around $15,000. Can you just sort of broadly explain to me why this house costs $50,000 to take down?
Absolutely. Now, I don't, Charlie LeDuff is not here tonight, but I could say as far as the cost of demos, I got jokes all day, I'll be here. But on a more serious note, this demo, the thing to remember about Detroit's project is the scale that they're operating at, they're doing dozens and hundreds of homes. And so there are some economies of scale that are brought to the table. And having personally visited this property, Mark was kind enough to let me ride along on this one. It was, you know, the first nuisance abatement, I believe, in his 13-year history that he had mentioned. And we went up to this house, I mean, it is literally filled to the door with items and there's flooding, there's asbestos, there's fire damage, and also, so all the scale of the problems at the property, because that was something that gave me pause as well. But meeting on site, talking with the building official and talking with the contractor, it certainly, it certainly makes sense that it would be this high. And then there, and part of that price, 10% of that is a contingency too. So it's really a not to exceed.
And then I-
So this is, this is an abandoned house, this is actually a packed house?
Abandoned by people, packed by things.
Okay.
There's an arson fire and they have not been determined who did it, so the insurance company will not pay.
And then the other point I would make, and I just want to, I see it in here, I just want to be really clear. I also know, when I've heard Mayor Doug and talked about his program, one of the costs that he cited that had increased from the previous mayor was the fill that they used in the basement and, you know, use cheap garbage in there, that's fine, it saves you money, but, you know, that's in there for life. And it costs more money to fill it with, what you say here is imported clean fill, I assume that's either certified or something, but I know that increases the cost. But I want to make sure that we're replacing this terrible structure with something that people can live on for the next 100 years.
Absolutely, and that is part of it, absolutely. Following proper environmental procedures, kind of going above and beyond, road and abatement, things like that, all kind of wrapped into this price.
Other comments or questions?
Given, given the location of the home, property values, is it safe to say that the $50,000 that the city is going to spend on demolishing this building, we will probably never see again, even though we're putting it on the tax rolls? Because the likelihood of someone buying the property and paying the $50,000 on it, in addition to the cost of the property, you're looking at $80,000 for just a piece of property?
In general, I might be inclined to say yes. I mean, a lot of that stuff is hard to predict. I mean, a lot, you know, if you notice sort of with properties that are nuisance abated, when things get put on the tax rolls, especially if you look, you know, foreclosures in Wayne County, for example, you know, a lot of that stuff does just kind of cycle over. However, with Ferndale being, you know, only 3.8 square miles, housing being in demand, you never know. An appraisal for this lot to come through, you know, a new build to be able to put something on there, whereas right now, you've got an uninhabitable structure that needs a ton of work. It could go either way. But in general, yeah, we're not, we're not exactly banking on getting this money back.
So, well, that's an interesting point. So the new people that purchase this property aren't obligated to pay the back taxes?
It depends on what happens with the property.
That's correct.
That's correct.
Potentially. I mean, right now, there's an owner, but to the extent that the projected costs get assessed and placed on the tax roll-
Right.
-it may or may not result in payment by that particular owner.
Okay.
And if there's a foreclosure with, for lack of taxes, and ultimately, the treasurer sells the property, any successor property owner would not have that overage that's owed.
All right. Other questions or comments?
No, I just wanted to make sure that that was clear, because based on what Mayor Protempiano was saying, you know, we really have to look at this going forward because this isn't going to be the first, this is going to be the last one. And we're going to have to look at that going forward about investing in demolishing buildings.
We, staff has started those conversations and hope to have kind of a comprehensive plan on dealing with some of these larger blight issues at the beginning of the new year.
All right, so we have a motion and a support. Is there any additional comments or questions? Hearing none. Marty, would you call the roll, please?
Council members Martin-
Yes.
Pollocka-
Yes.
Piana-
Yes.
Leaks May-
Yes.
And Mayor Coulter.
Yes, thank you, that item is adopted. Thanks, Jordan. Now, finally, moving on to the last regular agenda, item D is a consideration to suspend accepting applications for marijuana facilities until July 1st, 2017. Who's going to introduce that item?
Mayor, I'd be happy to introduce that. Before you this evening is a proposed resolution regarding asking for an additional pause in the consideration of any new medical marijuana facility applications. Council will recall last August that it indicated that it wished to take a pause with respect to consideration of new applications for medical marijuana facilities under the city's zoning and licensing ordinance. This past September, the state legislature adopted new House bills which will become effective on, in December of this year, which will create a potential licensing structure through the state. And council back last year had asked for input from the city staff after a period of time when one of the approved facilities had been up and operational for a period of time. One is now open, that data is still being gathered, but it's opened only periodically, it's not open on a full-time basis. And so in light of the new legislation, it seemed appropriate to put a pause on considering new applications for medical marijuana facilities under the city's regulatory ordinance and zoning ordinance in light of the new state legislature, legislation, which is a new framework for licensing, which is going to be licensing through the state. The city's ordinance for medical marijuana facilities is a special land use, which has been very narrowly, council will recall, its previously approved applications have been very narrow with respect to the approval, to a limited number of caregivers and those particular caregivers qualified patients. The new licensing scheme proposed, well, that's been approved, but it's not yet effective, provides a more broadened medical marijuana licensing framework, which will potentially allow for municipalities to consider whether it wishes to authorize provisioning centers, testing facilities, processing centers, and grow operations. And that dialogue has not yet happened with council and it seemed appropriate to pause any additional approvals under the existing framework until council's had an opportunity to consider how it wishes to proceed forward with the new state legislation.
So just sort of a question of clarification, because, and I've noticed in here that says even though the law will go into effect next month, people won't be able to start getting a state license until next-
December of 2017.
And so therefore, this should not impact the new applicants. But how long will that process take for them to get a license from the, from the state?
It's not clear. They're not, the state's not going to accept any applications until December of 2017.
They're not accepting applications until December of next year, so we've got some time. And then my other sort of question, just in terms of the timing, so the staff is asking for sort of a six-month pause to evaluate-
And bring back recommendations to council as to the framework that it may wish to adopt. While there's state licensing, municipalities do have rights in connection with what they wish to allow in their community. And that's going to be parts of the recommendation brought back to council as to what council may wish to see from the standpoint of types of license, medical marijuana license that it may wish to see, and also numbers as it relates to any particular type of medical marijuana license holder that it may wish to have considered.
So my only point there, and maybe this is considered in your timeline, is that I don't want to wait on, for six months. I don't feel knowledgeable about the ramifications of the new law yet, to even really to begin to sort of formulate what may or may not be appropriate here. And so sooner rather than later, we should have some sort of a session or discussion about what the new law is, how it's changed, what are the potential opportunities or not for local communities at some point in your timeline, because you're going to come back in six months with recommendations, but I don't know how to begin to insert any sort of comments in there in advance of that. So it'd be helpful, I think, for council to know, at what point are we going to have a discussion just about what the changes are, and how they're different than what we're currently doing and how, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, so we actually will end up having a work session on this. Right now, staff is actually going through and taking a look at it and understanding kind of where everything is as well. And that, yeah, there will be work sessions. Our goal is, I mean, if we end up making a decision sooner than July 1st, that's fine, but what was happening is Justin is literally getting two to three phone calls a day, people want to come in and meet with him, it's a long process and we have nothing to give them. So, yeah, so you will have plenty of time, this isn't where it's going to come to July 1st and suddenly now you have to make a decision. This is actually going to be a process that we're going to take so that we're all going through in the same phase.
So I'm comfortable with that, but if you could get a date sooner rather than later, to even just have the initial-
Sure.
-conversation, Dan, from a legal perspective and April, of what is the new law? What were the changes? Because I'm hearing a lot of stuff, but I'm not an expert at it, and it would be really helpful to hear.
Through the chair, I also recommend we reach out to the Michigan Municipal League because I think they're going to be doing an analysis for the cities and probably will do a training up at their Capitol Conference. So that's another opportunity for us to capitalize on that resource.
Perfect.
Through the chair, I have an additional question, sort of somewhat related, but we still have, I think, six applications that we're waiting for them to open, and I was wondering how this law is impacting their application status? Not their status, but the progress of opening.
Well, through the chair, the new state legislation doesn't impact them as it relates to the express special land use approval that they have been granted. But it's limited to the specific application and the special land use, the breadth of the special land use approval that council provided. So as I understand it, there's one that's open and I think Justin can, you know, address the issue of the status of the construction for the others. I think some are at various stages along the line, but they can still continue to operate as long as they get it done within the timeframe for their special land use approval. But it's limited to the scope of the special land use approval.
Right. Justin, could you give us just a brief update on where we are with the current applicants?
Sure. So last August, I think five were kind of set as the number that we were going to consider. One has been, as Dan had mentioned, one has opened pretty much by appointment only.
Where's that one at?
That one is 1915 East Nine Mile. And then three of those-
Just through, by appointment only to the qualified patients of that caregiver?
Right.
The other three are in various stages of construction. One of them on Hilton is in rough, rough electrical, rough, bringing up walls, things like that. So they're, they're still moving, they've been checked up upon. One on East Lewiston is still, I think, very close to being finished. That's another one that I would reach out to and just see if they, if they were planning on opening under this existing law. And then the one that was approved, their site plan was approved in August, they just submitted building plans last week. There is one final applicant who was at the planning commission earlier this year, his, their application didn't meet the planning commission's criteria for, they had some concerns about parking and a few other things, so they were planning on resubmitting for planning commission as well, which-
So to be perfectly clear through the chair, any action we take tonight will not affect the progress of those in-flight.
No, it would put a-
Those five, those five.
The one that has not received approval, it would, it would put a-
But the other five-
The other four. The other four already have approval. The one, it was, as I understand it, Justin, the planning commission, they withdrew their application, wished to modify their application.
Correct.
This proposed resolution would put a hold on that one as well.
Prove that?
Yes, that's the way it's drafted.
Is that our intent?
That is-
Is that our desire?
Yes.
Is that staff's recommendation?
That is the recommendation in light of the changing picture of medical marijuana licensing that has been now passed by the state. It's a different, different landscape than what was existing last August.
So we can't retro that approval based on the previous designation or previous-
There wasn't approval for this last applicant.
What I'm saying is we can't base it based on what we've approved for the other ones because the law has changed.
No, 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 what we're doing, through the chair, I'm sorry, what we're doing tonight shuts them down, not the law, the state law. The fact that we put a moratorium on tonight would shut that fifth one out because they've not gotten planning commission approval, they withdrew their application-
Or council approval, either.
Or council approval, so this resolution would take them out.
But they've already spent money going through the application process with this city.
Yes.
Yeah, so that causes me concern.
I have a problem with that, yeah.
You've been to the planning commission, they're working on going back to the planning commission.
I think the only thing I would add was that they were at the planning commission in January and that's when they, they chose to table their application. Since then, there's been conversations to rectify their situation, they have not been able to secure shared parking, some other things that they needed to do. So they, I mean, they've had some time going at this, I can only go on what they say and how hard they've been working on that.
I'm curious, are they here tonight? Is there representative of them?
Or any of the groups? No, okay. Has the clock ticked, you know, run out on any of the five? I know that they're, you know, based on when you were approved, there was a-
We've moved it from 24 months to 18.
To 18 months.
Right.
Has that run out on any of the five?
It has not run out, they've all completed substantial construction and so-
Which is what, the condition to continue the clock, yeah. I mean, I'm good with the recommendation with the discomfort of the fifth one, I'm not sure why.
That's the sentence you don't need to keep if you want to allow it.
What difference it would matter if we keep those in with the other four at this point and let them attempt to try to satisfy the planning commission's recommendations if they so desire. They may not want to, it doesn't sound like they're beating on Bush down to do it, but I think we should give them the opportunity to.
Through the chair, I mean, the resolution before you addresses both new applications and also specifically references any pending application. So if, to the extent council wishes to allow that other applicant to proceed forward, you could move the resolution deleting the hold as it relates to that one applicant who was already in process.
Okay. But I would ask, then, what's the delay?
I mean, that would be my question.
To the fifth applicant, what was their delay?
It's a fair question. If they were there in January and now we're almost to December, obviously, like I said, they're not beating the door down to do it and maybe even us leaving the door open for them will not prompt them to do anything more, but it feels like we're treating them differently.
Through the chair, I guess I would venture to guess that, I mean, my suggestion would be we would make the resolution leaving the door open for that one last group. I agree with you. My guess is, at this point, if they're not going to kind of get it together enough, by this point, I doubt they will, but it just doesn't feel right to crowd them out when they've paid their fees, they've gone through the process, they're still in some level of communication.
Would they have to go through the whole process again?
To the planning commission?
Yeah, okay.
That's their choice.
All right.
That's their choice to figure that out.
We wouldn't be forcing their hand, so.
Yeah. So I, through the- So I, through the chair, I concur with Councilman Martin. I think this is an appropriate, appropriate response to someone already in process.
So I don't think we've had a motion yet, so unless there's questions of clarification, we probably have gone way past where we're at.
I do, actually. On this fifth one, so you said that they first came to the Planning Commission in January. Was that when the 18 months started? At what point does their 18 months start?
If I'm reading the chair, they withdrew their application, though it doesn't matter. Their 18 months would start again when they filed an application again.
Oh, okay. I'm, I'm thinking differently. I'm thinking of plans, not application.
Yeah, no, yeah.
Okay, you're right.
This would be to fulfill the obligations of their existing application. This wouldn't be allowing them to resubmit another application and start the whole process over again, right?
If they were to come back to the Planning Commission, their, I mean, the key issues were parking and I think security, so they would be, it wouldn't be a brand new application. They would submit updates to their business plan for city attorney and police chief and myself to review. And if it was deemed that they were ready to go back to the Planning Commission, we would, we would bring them at the next.
Right, okay. And just to put some parameters around this, if they wanted to forego that piece of property and found another one, they would have to submit a new application and therefore would be applied under the-
They would not be able to do it.
They would not be able to do it, right.
Does want to be clear of what we're allowing, what we're not allowing.
But that's a good point.
Okay.
So I, like I said, I have the modified resolution. Did you want to do public comment, though, or zoning?
I mean, I will, I will ask, but I think we need a motion first and then-
All right. I would move that we adopt the resolution in the packet, striking the line in the final paragraph, and suspend the processing of any pending medical marijuana facility applications under the City of Ferndale's existing ordinances until January 1st, 2017.
I support.
Thank you.
Did you say January 1st?
July 1st, 2017.
That's a big difference, okay. And was that Piana, I'm sorry?
Yes.
Piana, moved by Martin and supported by Piana. Now, before we have further discussion, is there anyone from the audience that would like to address council on this issue tonight? All right, council, further comments or questions?
Questions. So if they withdrew their application back in January, is there a reason why we then didn't go to the next applicant and say, okay, you're going to be the fifth? Because to me, they then forfeited their space.
Yeah, it's definitely a good question. It wasn't actually a withdrawal of an application. They tabled-
Yep.
Okay.
That's right.
Tabled the request at the Planning Commission, which they were allowed, allowed to do.
Okay.
Yeah, good question.
Okay, thank you for the clarification.
And I want to say, I think this is a point worth belaboring, not only because I want to be fair to these people, but I also want to send the message that we're not trying to discourage people, put any roadblocks or obstacles in the way of people actually having a successful project. It has been frustrating that we haven't had more successful projects, but I don't want to give the impression that this council, because I know it doesn't, is trying to sort of deliberately delay or impose restrictions on these projects. We're trying to do everything that we can to actually bring some of these projects to fruition, and this is, I think, another example of it, whether they take us up on the opportunity or not.
Just a follow-up comment. One thing I've learned up through the entire time that the, the original law came to fruition on the books is that the business owners who are trying to set up a shop and the cities who are trying to accommodate are both frustrated with the law. So this was the law that was supposed to fix the frustration on both sides, so hopefully it has done that, but everybody's figuring out the details now about how to implement it so that both parties are happy of, of the business coming and the, and the, and the community and the residents around the business are, are satisfied and that our police department feels comfortable under this new law of administering the policies on behalf of the city, but also on behalf of the county and federal law. You know, easy stuff.
Exactly.
Well, and to add comment through the chair, I, I think this is a good opportunity. This not only helps us get through the complexity of this law, but it also lets people know that if you are interested in doing something in Ferndale, don't buy a piece of property in January expecting that you're going to have something in August, because I know in the beginning that was one of the issues that we faced, and that was why we raised it from three to five with some of the pending properties that we were dealing with. So I, I think this is good that we're making this, we're moving forward on this to, to suspend temporarily.
So other comments or questions? All right, if not, Martin, would you call the role, please?
Councilmembers Pollocka?
Yes.
Piana?
Yes.
Leek May?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
And Mayor Coulter?
Yes, thank you. That item is adopted. Moving on now to call the council, and I see our newly re-elected state representative in the House, and although you're not normally part of our call to council, I would gladly give you a few minutes to come on up and just say a few words. You're probably were in Lansing today, I'm guessing, which is part of the reason for the late hour, but first of all, congratulations on your reelection representative.
Thank you very much. Actually, I was not in Lansing. I was coming over from Royal Oak Township. I had a coffee hour over in Royal Oak Township.
That's right, that's right, yes.
So we had a really great discussion. It was a good turnout there, and we talked a bit about the election, talked about what's going on in Lansing, and wanted to remind you as well of some other upcoming coffee hours for, for any of you and anyone at home watching. We have one tomorrow in Hazel Park at noon at the Hazel Park Library, and then we have two coming up in December, Oak Park at the Community Center on Monday, December 12th at 10:30 a.m., and then Tuesday, December 13th in Berkeley at 6:30 p.m. at the library. And I know we had one here in Ferndale in September, and we had a good turnout there. So we, you know, again, we try to do a couple a month and rotate between the seven different communities. So, yes, I was reelected, so I appreciate that. The election didn't go as, as I would have hoped in, in a lot of other races. I won't get into too many of those here.
And you're not in the majority, unfortunately.
Not in the majority, no, no. We, you know, needed nine seats to do that. Unfortunately, we took one and lost one, so we're, we're in the exact same position. But it doesn't, you know, it doesn't change what I want to do and, you know, continue working for the residents of this community, whether they're D R or an independent or whatever. You know, obviously, I serve the entire district and want to continue serving the district, helping out with any kind of constituent services or any issues. I always encourage people to reach out if they have any questions, suggestions, concerns, you know, call me 517-373-0478. Finally have that memorized. And then you can email me at, it's robertwittenberg@house.mi.gov. But obviously, I will, you know, continue serving this district and helping people out in the community and also, you know, again, trying to push the progressive agenda. I think, you know, it was based on the votes that we received and based on the platform that I was, I was working on, I think that's, that's still the same case, and I will continue doing that and being the voice for this community in Lansing. So I do appreciate the, the opportunity to go back to Lansing and continue serving this community. It has been a real honor and a lot of fun. I actually really do enjoy this. I enjoy seeing all of you. I enjoy going to the various council meetings, you know, there's seven different communities, four different school districts, a very diverse, engaged community. I would say this is one of the more engaged communities in the state, or districts in the state. I mean, you know, constituents do reach out to me on, on many of the issues with thoughts, concerns, ideas. You know, I've had a couple bills passed into law that were signed into law, and hopefully there's about one or two more that could be signed in before the end of lame duck, and that would actually put me as the top freshman Democrat as far as laws that were passed, which would be a great honor. So right now, I'm tied for the most, and so we'd like to do that. So it shows that obviously that, you know, we can work across the aisle and get some things accomplished. You know, we're not always going to agree on every issue, unfortunately, or fortunately, but, so we'll continue working to get some, some really good things passed here in the state of Michigan. So, but I, again, I really enjoy this and look forward to continue serving the district. So, yeah, I just wanted to come say hello and, and thank everyone and let everyone know about the coffee hours and encourage people, again, to, to reach out with, if they ever need anything, state government or elsewise, or, you know, anything else. We can, if we don't have the answer or we don't know, we can, we can put you in touch with the right person, but, you know, never hesitate to call or email. So that was really it. Any questions? You guys have anything, you know, and I know we talked about it a little bit tonight, you know, we have lame duck coming up. We are actually on break right now until after Thanksgiving. This week is hunting break, so that's something that they've had for quite some time.
It's real big here in Ferndale. It's real big here in Ferndale.
That's right, yeah, exactly. Right. I know I am, you know, like I said, I'm not, I'm not going out hunting. I'm here in the district. That's why we're hosting coffee hours here. Bless you. And so making sure I'm staying active and engaged here, and then obviously wish everyone a great Thanksgiving, and then we'll hit the ground running as soon as we get back after Thanksgiving and hoping that we actually get some good things accomplished. You know, I've, I've heard, this will be my first time serving during lame duck, and I've heard some, some nightmare stories, and I've heard, you know, other times where really nothing happens. And hopefully, only good things happen, and it's a, it's a, it's a dream session, you know, for lame duck session. But just know that I will be there fighting for the residents of not only Ferndale, but, you know, all seven communities here in the 27th District.
Great.
So.
Great to see you, too. Congratulations.
Thank you, thank you. Any questions, any thoughts?
You're doing a great job.
Yeah, congrats to everyone else, everyone else that was on the ballot across the district that, that won. I know there was some school board elections here, and there were some other things that didn't go well, but nonetheless, you know, I applaud everyone for running and thank everyone for, for, you know, being engaged in, in the process. So, thank you.
Good, good to see you.
Good to see you all.
All right, Chief Collins, anything else from the police department for the good of the community?
Nothing further, ma'am.
Oh, all right. Jenny, anything from HR this evening?
Nothing.
Jill, welcome back. Our new mother, not for her first time being a mother, but she was again a new mother.
Third time's a charm.
Third time's a charm. We've missed you. Welcome back.
Thank you. Good to see you back. Just want to make an announcement. I know Sarah mentioned this last time, but we are, on December 3rd is our annual holiday showplace at the Kulik Center from 9:00 to 3:00. So we're still accepting vendor applications. If you know of anyone that has a craft that they'd like to sell, the application is on our website and it's also at the Kulik Center, so feel free to stop by and fill an application. In conjunction with that event, we host our Breakfast with Santa, so Santa will be there that day singing this ti, singing and handing out green bags and taking pictures with the kids, so we're looking forward to that. And registration is available on our website as well. Thank you.
Excellent, thank you. Cindy, I, you know, I know you spoke earlier, anything from the DDA else that you want to share with us?
Um, just a couple names I forgot.
Because you guys are busy this time of year, too.
Always. I just got a quick one.
I think that's one of the things.
I did forget to mention that to cap off our Small Business Saturday, we are doing the annual tree lighting in the Woodward median on the 26th at 6:00. I know some of you will be disappointed, but Metallic Claus has retired, so he will not be joining us this year. However, we will be joined by a group from the Ferndale Community Concert Band. They will be coming out. I'm not sure exactly what group, but there'll be a brass group that'll come out and play a few tunes. So we will light the tree. We have a new lighting pattern planned, so hopefully our poor, slightly gappy tree will look a little more lit than it has in the past. And then on Saturday, December 10th, is the Holiday Ice Festival. We will have free photos with Santa, the reindeer will be back, the urban hayrides. Lunch with Santa will be at Rosie O'Grady's again this year, and the Holiday Ice Festival this year is presented by Craigor Plumbing Service, so we're really excited. They wanted to start being part of more things in Ferndale. They're a great, a great business and they're really community-minded, so we're super excited and super happy that they have stepped up to help us put on this event and keep bringing things, most of the things that are free cost, right, no cost to the people that come down. So that, that is all I have now.
Excellent, thank you. Fire Chief Sullivan, anything for the fire department for the good of the community this evening?
Mayor, council, we recently have had four fires, three of them in Madison Heights and one in Ferndale. The one in Ferndale has been determined to be set by someone deliberately in a house trying to be flipped, so we are looking for suspects in that case. The three in Madison Heights, two of which were under investigation, and their fire marshal was his first day on the job when both fires occurred virtually back-to-back. I responded to both fires, so we loaned Madison Heights our fire marshal in a spirit of cooperation between cities as we are auto aid and mutual aid with them to help that. One of them has turned into an arson, so that's under investigation along with Oakland County. So our auto aid and mutual aid are working very well.
Yeah, great. Good job, thank you. Jordan, anything else from economic development?
Yes, sir.
All right. Kara, anything from community and community engagement and communications? I think I have that backwards, but.
Good evening. I just wanted to provide a really quick summary of election communications. So obviously, last week was a big election, and we knew, we expected at least going into it that we were going to have a really high voter turnout, which we did. We also knew that four years ago, the last presidential election in 2012 had, had some long waits and some other issues, and so looking for some different ways to communicate that might help alleviate that. This is only a small part. Most of this was, all these wonderful things done by our city clerk, which I'm sure she'll talk about. But we did employ two new things. One is a video. As we were going into the few weeks ahead of the election, we had these really important little pieces of information that we were trying to figure out how we could get to a broader audience. We decided to go with an animated video, which was new for us, was successful. In the nine days leading up to the election, it was viewed 1,700 times, so that's great, and it had an even broader reach of about 3,500 people who at least saw it and was able to kind of flip through it. The other thing we did was a hashtag this year. We had posters at all the polling locations, and we asked residents if they had questions, concerns, comments, long lines, anything to, you know, most people are already on their social media anyway, just hashtag, and we monitored all day. We did have about 70 people use the hashtag across Facebook, Twitter, and Instagram, so more than I was expecting, honestly. Most of it was just information about wait times and all of it was positive. We had a couple of, you know, constructive move a sign here or, you know, question there. Just in general, on the day before and the day of the election, we had a reach of almost 40,000 across our Facebook and Twitter. So that's about 30,000 on Facebook and about 9,000 on Twitter. That's people who are seeing our content, engaging with our content, or sharing our content. So this is obviously in addition to the mailer that the clerk's office put out to the whole, you know, City of Ferndale, and the newsletter content, and content on the cable, so that, you know, we're able to kind of reach everybody, but this is vastly bigger than we've had in other elections and, you know, other big events like this, so we definitely are reaching more people than we have in the past. I just want to thank our residents for engaging and for sending us their questions and their comments and kind of helping to make this all a success, and I think we will probably employ these strategies again as we move forward.
Thank you, thank you. How about from finance this evening? No, all right. Joe, anything from the Assistant City Manager's Office? All right, probably good, too, right? DPW, Lloyd, what's going on with our DPW department this evening?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, we're about midway through our curbside leaf collection, and the trees have decided to finally cooperate. And so, you know, we're going to be out there, and the guys are going to be putting in some long hours, guys and girls. And so the, they've asked me actually to come here tonight and, and ask for the residents' cooperation. As you can imagine, you know, very large piles of leaves, and later in the afternoon it gets dark early, a lot of equipment, a lot of people out there trying to move these leaves. Please be patient, please allow them some room, please give them a little space to work, and we will manage to make a collection successfully this year. We are on the west side this week, east of Woodward will be next week, and then a final wrap-up the following week on the west side. Each side, east and west, had equal terms, and so...
Do you find that even though the leaves are a little late this year, that they typically are done on time, or is there any consideration to maybe needing to extend it?
There is consideration. I have reached out to the yard waste facility and our haulers to see if there's any room. The only difficulty will come in is that typically, around 8th to 10th of December, we get plowable snow. It may only last a day or two, and of course, I would encourage residents during the next two weeks to get as many leaves out as possible, because if it does happen to snow, which of course, we're going to have 70-degree weather on Thursday, but if it happens to turn quickly in December and we get snow, those leaves will be plowed right back up onto your lawn. And so, we don't want that. We'd rather collect them and make that black gold compost for the residents, so please put them out there at the curb the next two weeks in particular. And then finally, I'd like to let council know and the residents know that our road improvement program for this season is wrapping up. 16 roads have been completed. We have two roads, one that will be paved Academy on Thursday, and really, it's been rather successful, other than one area, which we've had a number of concerns with some sewer that needed repairs that was discovered. And we had some problems initially with the new pavers that we're trying out as a demonstration. But the good news is, by the end of this week, all that should be resolved, other than punch list items. And then in the, in the spring, there will be two remaining streets that'll be done for a total of 20 this construction year.
Right.
So, anyway, that's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Actually, through the chair? Yes. Regarding the leaves, I've noticed up and down the streets, they're kind of piled really high. Is there something that we as residents can do, maybe, would you like us to level them a little bit? I mean, that's...
The best way for us is that if they're in long, narrow piles.
Long, narrow piles.
And so, the high doesn't matter as much as just together. So that as the truck comes along and the rakers come along, we can do it very productively.
Gotcha. Okay.
Good question. All right. Thank you, Lloyd.
Thank you.
So Marnie, you had a busy week?
We sure did. Yeah, we had...
What would you like to share with us this evening?
I would like to share what a wonderful turnout we had. We had over 73% of Ferndale's registered voters. We have just under 16,000 registered voters, and 11,487 of them either voted by absentee ballot. We had 2,800 vote by absentee ballot, and the other 9,000, or 8,000 showed up at the precincts, which turned out really well. We have been making huge efforts over the past four years to really improve the process. After 2012, the wait times and the backups, we really have been looking at ways to improve the process with our election task force and city staff and our precinct inspectors or polling locations. It's really turned out well. We've added two more precincts. We've had improved flow, and the wait times have significantly improved. We have tons of surveys that we're still going through for data. It looks like most people waited up to about an hour, but most people were pretty good-spirited about it. We saw some interesting trends with people voting early in the day rather than later, which really got the precinct inspectors back here early, which made them very happy. So all of the precinct inspectors were out of here by 10:00, which was wonderful. And it was a really, just a huge team effort. There are so many people that I need to thank, you know. First and foremost, our voters for showing up and behaving, and, you know, turning out and patiently waiting and, and, you know, just behaving in a impartial manner. You know, that was kind of our message, was really to ask people to be tolerant of opposing viewpoints, and they really showed up and did a great job. You know, I have to thank my precinct inspectors, all, almost 100 of them. Thank you, Jordan. And also, the council members, four out of five of you who helped me on Election Day, appreciate that. The staffs of the polling locations. I mean, Renaissance Vineyard Church gave out coffee, so did the Ferndale Free Methodist. Everyone went to great lengths to make our voters feel very welcome and comfortable. And of course, the election task force, of whom I could not have accomplished all this without, and very special thanks to Barb Miller, my deputy clerk, and Kara Sokol for all of her assistance with the communications. I think it really went well.
Excellent. Thank you. April, anything from the City Manager's Office?
I'm sure you're all going to do the same thing, but I can't say enough about Marnie staying on top of all of the improvements. Every election since the task force has been implemented has been under stark review, and every time, she took every single election and improved on it. And I don't think we could be more pleased to what we saw and heard what went on during the Election Day, in particular, watching some of these other communities that went through what we went through in 2012. So her continued effort on continuous improvement really showed on Monday, or on Tuesday, and I can't thank her enough for staying on that. And also, that task force has stayed involved for almost four years, focused on that particular issue, and I think that's such a huge success of having people stay and be passionate about it. And it stays a pretty big group, didn't it, Marnie? You're still averaging 10 people a meeting. So I just think in general, what a good effort between our staff, but also using our residents as a sounding board on how we can improve what we do. So I'm sure I'm stealing some people's thunder here, but I just wanted to acknowledge her passion for making sure that these elections continue to go smoothly, and how she takes every single one as an opportunity to learn, which is what we want in all of our employees. But she definitely exudes that constant, continuous improvement. So congratulations on a job well done.
Thank you. Dan?
Very briefly, Your Honor. Earlier this evening, Councilwoman Piana asked about the ordinance provision regarding barking dog, and I just wanted, I will circulate a copy of that ordinance, but just, it prohibits the sound created by any domesticated animal kept or maintained by any person when such animal noise disturbance is frequent or continued and clearly audible at a distance within or beyond immediate vicinity of the noise. And then, as it relates to the standard, it's a reasonable person standard. And so, that's the current text of that provision. Secondly, just an update for council with respect to the status of the motogram action. The city, motion for summary disposition with respect to that matter has been filed. The court has scheduled a argument session for December 7th, so it's scheduled for resolution, hopefully, December 7th.
Good. Thank you for that update. Appreciate it. Councilman Martin?
Just two things. Ditto on all the laud and praise Marnie gets and deserves for a successful election. And believe it or not, we don't meet again until after Thanksgiving, so I just want to wish everybody a happy and safe Thanksgiving holiday.
Excellent. Councilwoman Leaks May?
Well, other than that, going off of Councilman Martin, happy Thanksgiving to all. Marnie, team, everybody, it was a great election. I really enjoyed working in precinct, too. And I have to send a shout-out to a small business that surprised us with a very nice treat when we were all working very hard. So I'm sending a shout-out to Big B, who brought a cider and hot chocolate, and it was just pretty nice. It was a nice surprise, so, and it was very pleasant, and thanks for your hard work.
Excellent. Councilman Pollocka?
Just to add, I've heard so many compliments regarding the fast voting process at many of the precincts. Many of the people were shocked at how quickly they were able to get in and out of the polls. Huge compliments to the polling staff and the city clerk's office. Congratulations to all the local school board and library elected members, and members elected and re-elected to our county and state positions. And finally, wish you all very happy, safe Thanksgiving. Shop on, I'm sorry, stay at home on Thursday, shop on Saturday.
Mayor Protem Piana?
Yep, I just wanted to echo kudos to the city clerks. I was a precinct worker four years ago at University, which was the precinct with the most challenges, and I went home and I thought I just got ran over by a truck. And this past election, I was like, this is easy. So the experience and continuous improvement is definitely, was felt by everyone, and me personally, so I just wanted to say thank you. And the culture, or the spirit of teamwork that I saw from all the city departments, that's how I envision city government works, and you guys are, you guys are doing it, so thank you. And then, of course, congratulations to Helene Zach and Representative Robert Wittenberg. I'm so glad you're continuing on your relationship with Ferndale and your role as leaders at the state and county level. I continue, I look forward to working with you on the hard stuff. And then I just wanted to say, this election was pretty monumental for a lot of people, and just sort of echoing what Representative Wittenberg said, is that we're here to listen and hear both sides, and we represent more than one flavor of political leanings in our community, and I just wanted to know that I'm open and I'm listening, and any new ideas, anything you want to share, I'm available to have a conversation with you and have coffee. And I just really wanted to say, what I heard someone say on TV, I won't mention who said it, but when someone just agrees with you, doesn't mean that they become the enemy. And I think we need to sort of get back to how do we problem solve together? And I'm willing and I'm able and I'm committed to doing that on behalf of my role in Ferndale. So that's all I wanted to say for today. Thank you.
Well, thank you. You've heard a lot about the way the election went in Ferndale, and I echo all the sentiments that were expressed. It's incredible that we had higher turnout. 73% is amazing.
You know who would be proud?
Dennis would be very, very proud. 73%. How did, by the way, do you know, and I don't want to embarrass you, how that compares with four years ago, or even eight years ago?
I believe we had 63% four years ago, and county-wide, it was about 72, but we were beating the threshold for the county.
And we rarely beat the county average. So, obviously, this was an election that drew a lot of interest and excitement, and it's also an election that revealed a lot of the divisions within our state and our country and our community even. But I'm proud of the way that, for the most part, Ferndalians conducted themselves. Maybe we didn't always abide by the letter of the civility pledge, but for the most part, we had a civil discussion and debate in this community, and I'm proud of the way that Ferndale handled that, and I just want to encourage people to continue that spirit going forward. Tensions are still very high, emotions are raw, and I'm part of a lot of people. I know there's been a lot of events to help address that, and I believe there's going to be some more. But I just want to encourage everyone to remember that we're all Ferndalians and whoever you voted for, we all love this city and we all love our country, and we'll live to fight another day. So as long as we're here, I know this will be a community that welcomes everybody of all political persuasions, and I appreciate the residents who behave that way. So with that, I think we're going to move on to a closed session, right? A motion for going to closed session.
A move we consider materially exempt from discussion or disclosure by state or federal statute pursuant to MCL 15.268H.
Is there support? It's close, but I'll give it to Leaks May. So Martin, Leaks May?
I got one tonight.
We have to do a roll call on that. Marnie?
Hey, Councilmembers Piana?
Yes.
Leaks May?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Pollocka?
Yes.
And Mayor Coulter?
Yes, and so you all get to go home, but we do not.